What is going on here?
All right, well, good evening. It's February 3rd, 2025. It's after 7:00 PM. Welcome to all. At this point, we did not have a second meeting last month because we had no actionable items. So I'm not saying we all have to get back into the sequence of things, but this is kind of weird. We don't have it. That hasn't happened very often. Tonight's meeting is here in council chambers and is livestreamed on YouTube. And our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, February 18th, due to President's Day holiday. And with that, Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll of council.
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Jose.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum, and the agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I'll ask you to stand and join council members in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from our January 6th council meeting? So moved by Ms. Knappich, seconded by Mr. Jose. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, council minutes are approved. Communications from the mayor. Mr. Mayor, how are you this evening?
Good, Mr. President, council. Got several things to share, and I'll be strong by saying Happy Charles Follis Day. For those not familiar with this, and I was not very much familiar with the history of Charles Follis, but didn't recognize or realize that in 2018, Governor Kasich by statute made February 3 statewide holiday, Charles Follis Day. And we're going to have more on that in a little bit. I think we've got a group coming in to make a little bit of presentation on that that will interrupt where we are at the time with councils leave. But I expect them to be here very shortly, and we'll talk about it a little more. I'm going to tag team this a number of times tonight. First thing I've got, just one to thank, and these notes were put together last week when we were still putting down salt, it seemed like every day. And I want to give a shout out to our PPM crews for the work they've done on the roads. Had a lot of nice compliments from people in the community and even from outside the community about the condition of our roads. And Kurt, I want to thank you. And we had a conversation this morning, in fact. Now, myself and maybe council members as well, we started January 1, and when our terms kind of starts, we kind of think in terms of the calendar year maybe where the snow fell. In their department, they think of it in terms of the season. But see, for us, like December 2023, that was Mayor Brennaman's problem. January 2024 became my problem. So in my world, 2024 was a very light year, and Mr. Denning confirmed that this morning. Kurt, do you have a, you just have a few numbers, Rod, if this is Joel's or?
Yeah, to date, we've had 18 events in comparison to last year with 14 events total. So we put down this year around 2,800 ton of salt on those 18 events. Guys are doing a great job. We've had very few calls from public, which is a good thing. Just proud of the staff and their, some of them are very new at this. So they've been trying to do a really good job for us, so we're thankful for that.
Thank you.
Second thing I wanted to bring your attention, since we last met, and again, that was a month ago at this point, the winter newsletter's gone out, and some things in there worth to read. And one of the things I want to touch on there is if you've read that, and as you may know from the announcements, that we have a new person on staff. I'd like to introduce you to Joe Bodnar. Joe's with us tonight. Joe, do you want to, can you just stand up and introduce yourself, say, give us a little brief bio?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Members of council, city staff, residents of the city. My name is Joe Bodnar, and I'm the new building official at the city. I will strive every day to try to maintain the high standards that Tim Lade has been able to establish in the city for such a long established career. I look forward to meeting each and every one of you and getting to know you a little bit better throughout the process. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll try not to mispronounce his name in the future, and again, this is new experience. I'm glad to have Tim here. You know, there's a little bit of crossover here. We're allowing Tim kind of to help show Joe the ropes. Also glad Tim is here because this may be one of our last chances to, number one, give him a hard time. But number two, preach, you know, thank him for his years of service to the community. He's one of those people that I knew before I was actively involved in the city government. And I knew him around town, knew that, didn't know exactly what role he played, but the more I've become, you know, now very involved in the government, getting an understanding for how, what a key role that is, and what a good job he's done. He's got both the depth of knowledge, but the common sense, which those two things don't always go hand in hand in life to get people through difficult experiences. So if you haven't read it, there's a nice, Tim wrote a very nice letter in the newsletter that is worth a read. But, you know, Tim's had a lot of years built up, a lot of vacation days built up, and he, I heard the joke, he, for a while there, he was half Damone because of taking that. And then sometimes he was no Damone. And we are now transitioning to probably be no Momone. Anyway, thanks to Tim, and look forward to working with you, Joe. Couple of things that happened in the last few weeks. WDC kicked off their year again. For us, we've kind of been meeting throughout the year, but a lot of other organizations are kicking off their new year. WDC started off with their traditional breakfast meeting out at the Career Center. That was very well attended and well done. January 20th, there was a Martin Luther King Jr. service at Second Baptist Church that I was at. January, that same day, I should say, as a lead up to that, that if you may recall, National Championship game that night, we're going to need a shout out to the friends at ATI. We had Brutus Buckeye sitting right up here at front, and hopefully you saw those pictures, but he was up here for a week. And we had a lot of people take advantage of the photo ops there, so thanks to that group. Wish Community Hospital, I did get a chance to have a tour of the new emergency edition as Scott Boyes talked about during our meeting just now. And I want to thank everybody for making time to get there, beating me there, by the way. But glad for Scott putting that on, and glad you're all able to attend. January 22nd was the Main Street Annual Meeting. Many of you are in attendance, and if so, you saw me once again having a chance to embarrass myself. We received an award for Butterfly Alley, and our, at least our participation on that. And as you know, the city was kind of, you know, we did a lot with that, but by and large, the movers and shakers were the director and the staff of Main Street. So I spent about two minutes accepting the award and calling Shannon Carey throughout that entire two minutes, which was embarrassing, not just in the first place, but because in the last year, I've gotten called Ms. Mayor Brennaman a number of times. And I've always really rubbed it in when people have done that. And she's one of the few people that never did that, so it's, it just didn't work out well at all, so had to live with that. The 23rd, we had, kind of on very short notice, Joel and myself and Justin Starlin were interviewed by Channel 5. I think they saw the piece in the Daily Record about the housing starts. And they kind of came up that morning on, you know, at nine o'clock, they called, wanted to know if we'd be able, available to talk. And like 90 minutes later, we were on camera, which kind of, we thought we were talking. We didn't know we were on camera. But I've heard, it's one of those things that apparently it was on live a few days later, but unless you actually saw it, it's, we've not actually seen it. I heard people watched it and said they enjoyed it, but a little nervous about that because we've not actually seen it, so we hope it came out okay. That Sunday, there was a Daily Record article I want to bring to your attention. I think I did forward it to everyone. The Millersburg Mayor State of the City Talk. Wanted to point out, and this is, I think, a credit, I mentioned this at the Main Street meeting as well last week, is when the Millersburg Mayor was talking about some of their goals, or her goals, she talked about, well, we'd like to do our downtown and our housing kind of like Worcester's doing it. So there's at least somebody that thinks we may know what we're doing. For a year, I've been talking about the America 250 Celebration in 2026, the Semi-Centennial. And finally, we've made some concrete steps towards something happening on there. There have been programs out there at the state and the national level, and nobody's really stepped up locally to take the initiative on that, and that's finally happened. The Visitors and Convention Bureau is going to be the local clearinghouse for those events. Phil has attended some meetings on that, and I think he's maybe within the administration will be kind of the playperson on that for our involvement, whatever that may turn out to be. There's plenty of directions that can go on that, and we just now have our foot in the garden. We'll spend the next year kind of talking about what that looks like. I did share that same day, we received a recognition from the Government Finance Association for a certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting for Andre. He forwards that to the mayor every year, and I know he follows away somewhere. Apparently, we have 39 years of consecutive awards, which, you know, may make it not a big deal, but if you're not getting those awards, it's a very big deal, because, you know, things are problems. So the good news is, the good work continues on. That was a crazy day because the same day I went to meet with the Boys and Girls Club at Edgewood, and they were doing a series on leadership and had a chance to talk there. Another embarrassing moment, I'm at the age where, like, whenever I embarrass myself, the only fun I get out of it is sharing it with others. So it's one of those recognition holidays getting, because one of the kids in the junior high kids or middle school kid wanted to ask me if I'd ever made a citizen's arrest. And I made a Barney Fife reference. And not only did no, none of the kids know who I was talking about, but I looked around the room, and the teachers and the aides.
They didn't know me.
Nobody, nobody, so.
They're all under the age of 30.
Glad that this show appreciates this a little bit, so. Then finally, this week on, around the 28th, I guess, the one this week, it was last week, I was able to go down to a luncheon, and I dropped off the place cards for each of your spots, because I thought that did a good job of explaining what the event was. But this was put on by the Ohio Association of County Behavioral Health Authorities, was held in the State House atrium, a nice luncheon. And our own Scott Rotolo was recognized as the Advocate of the Year Award. And Scott, again, always represents our community well, but did so again on this occasion. You know, all the award recipients had a few chances to stand up and talk about themselves a little bit. And Scott, again, made us, made it clear he was very deserving of the award, and again, gave us all something to be proud of. Scott and his wife were down there, Chief Fisher, with a few others from Wayne County. But it was one of those events that was really a pleasure to be a part of. Looking ahead this coming week, February 5th, just a few days away, the Lyric Event is doing a grand opening with the official ribbon cutting on February 7th. A lot of people's work has gone into that for a long period of time, so we're glad to see that finally taking place. On the 11th next week, the WDC panel with Mayor Pla, will be taking place. There's a breakfast meeting. I'll be participating with Mayor Plybin from Orville. At least two of the Wayne County Commissioners, Ohio Senator Al Landis, and a representative from Congressman Max Miller's office. The overall theme is visions for 2025. There are private tickets still available for that if you've not signed up already. That same day, we'll be starting with our first of four State of the City addresses, starting with the Quanis Club, then Rotary Club, City Council, Alliance Club. So it's, you know, fortunately, you're towards the end of that, so it'll be a little more refined than it will be the first go around. Then later that week, we have a tour of the Career Center going on with Dee Smith, who's the Executive Director of the Ohio Association of Career and Technical Education. And then on the 18th, we will be doing a committee session before the meeting at 6:00. And at that time, we will be doing a presentation on the proposed peanut roundabout at Burbank, Oldman, and Winkler. And then finally, as mentioned by Scott Boys, as part of the meeting tonight, this is the 75th anniversary of Wish Community Hospital, coming up in March. And I want to, again, give them a shout out for 75 years in community, and what a difference it has made to our community, having that little community hospital here, as opposed to what if that had never gotten off the ground. So something for us to be thankful for. Finally, I've got, on this, almost forgot, Chief Fisher, and I mentioned it before. So this just happened this morning, I think it came to our attention. If you recall, we talked about the flock camera system before that we paid, you approved last year and are now in place. And we now have, I guess, our first report of how those actually put in use, so.
I'll be very brief. We actually have two, and one of them's kind of significant because it's the first day they installed the first camera. There was only one of them put in, and it was working that day. And we actually got a call, Foles dropped off, they had reviewed video, had that suspect, thought they knew who she was. Didn't have a plate number, but had a pretty good vehicle description. It was a rented U-Haul van, right? Don't see a lot of those. Put it in the flock system, got a plate, called U-Haul, who rented it, confirmed her identity, ascertained she was in the Medina County Jail. Officer went up, talked to her, she confessed, solved the case. Six days later, same camera, went off on a Sunday morning with a stolen vehicle alert. By chance, Officer Hall was working in extra duty detail at Grace Brother Church. And in talking to him, he said it was like divided intervention. He's looking out the door as it goes over the radio, and the car's coming like right at him down the parking lot. Or it's basically looping the lot. Calls the road units, they get there, recover the stolen car, arrest the guy. So you all proved spending the money, and sometimes you never get to hear the success of how things are working. There's only five of our cameras installed so far, but we're already seeing success in stolen crimes, so thank you.
Excellent, excellent.
A quick agenda review, we have seven items on first reading. All but the alley vacation are budgeted. Managers are always anxious to get moving on equipment purchases, and that applies to a lot of those. But we would ask that council consider passing the first two items tonight, provided that there are no concerns warranting otherwise. And with that, then I'm going to interrupt the meeting briefly because we have our guests here tonight. Mr. Walker, would you, are you the spokesperson?
Well, I kind of got put into this.
Come on up. So we have Lawrence Walker here. I told you that we're doing some things in connection with Charles Follis Day, and a little bit of the history of that. And Lawrence is one of the people I reached out to when we first heard about this. I also want to recognize, we have Gabe Tudor in attendance tonight on behalf of West City Schools. I knew he wanted to be a part of this as well. And I asked Lawrence if he would want to say anything about that because once we started talking about this, I read some articles, and Lawrence and some others had a part in that 2018 legislation that made this an official state day of recognition. So with that, Lawrence, I guess, could you introduce the rest of your group?
And while Cheryl's right here, I'd like to introduce Cheryl Goff, who is a counselor at Worcester High School. She's been there many years. Matter of fact, and I say that in a way of, shit, already get your foot out of here. She's, she's coming close to retiring. And you know what, and I'm going to add this too, but I'm really proud about this because in the 80s and 90s, and I was president of NAACP back in that time, one of the things we worked on was having diversity within the high school, and that's with teachers. And she was one of the hires back at that time, and.
Not that time, I'll, I'll.
About that time.
Ann Roberson.
Ann Roberson, yes.
I know Ann.
There was quite a few, just to, just to let you know, there was quite a few. And a lot of these teachers have retired. And we, we've started a new diversity group that Gabe knows quite a bit of. And I didn't see Ms. Green here, who's the president of NAACP. And, you know, we're still working on that, and we're working on as a team in recognizing just not black history, but all of the different people that make up this community and recognize those dates and times. But this evening, they asked me, and before I go any further, Mike Franks back here. Mike, stand up, would you please? Mike is, I asked him, I said, what is your MO? And he said, well, I'm an historian, and he is a guy that's done history in Wayne and Holmes County. And he has, I believe, 14,000 followers in his Facebook. And the reason I bring him up is because he was one of the originators with the late Dave Brill, all that we know and love. And Dave, and of course Cheryl, and the man that was going to be here tonight, and Jim Stoner, who, you can't believe this, the company he works with, I guess the tariff is going to be on with Canada tonight at midnight. And the company he works with told him that they wanted product tonight before midnight. So he had to drive to Toledo, and they were coming down from Canada to meet. And I said, oh, thank you. So you want me to? So that's why I'm in this position. I don't mind, and Jim Stoner, he started with Mike, and they were looking on some of the history of Charles Follis. And with that, they paired with David, and then came myself, and then Cheryl. And this was back in 2017, I believe, we started. And we raised money for the headstone, Charles Follis's headstone without cemetery. And it was actually a stone carved. You can see where someone took something hard and carved his name in and his family. And the plot was right there, and we're going, that's unbelievable. So one of our first objectives was to get a new stone. To get a new stone, we needed to raise money. And the quote, what was the quote that?
It was like $5,600 or something like that.
Right. We were trying to get this stone, and we ended up raising about $30,000. And with that money, we started, we got a new stone, put out the cemetery. Any of you ever get a chance, go up there and see it. And it tells the history of Charles as a bench seat that looks to the stone, and his whole family saw that now. And that was one of our starts, and then it became larger and larger. And we started looking at the trail. And I don't know if many of you know it, I know there's a sign out here. I know there's one in the church I attend, Second Baptist Church. And it starts on Market Street, and it ends up at Weber's Grill over in Chill. And you know that's where we play professional football. But seeing all of that, and there's so much more to it, the history of it. I mean, I graduated from Worcester High School, and I'm a native of Worcester all my life. And I know several of you, council members, that are sitting here. And I'm very, very proud of this city. We have a great city. And saying that, I'd like to thank you, Bob, for taking these few minutes to recognize this, and the city council, and everyone that's here. I'd like to just say, Charles Follis exemplified the power of one with both grace and greatness. We all in the community share a one act that will be, help others transcend the adversities, the challenges, and the despair that they experience in life. One person, one family, one community at a time. One act of kindness, one gesture of appreciation, one civic service, one gift of opportunity extended to those less fortunate. One donation to support a cherished cause. One enrichment of a young. One enrichment of a young person. One instance that your talent, one word of inspiring and helping someone to dream beyond their circumstances. One expression of confidence, another by the power of one. I'd just like to add to that. Our community has much to be proud of. But at the very near top of the list is our ability to claim Worcester as the home of Charles Follis. The first black professional player. In 2018, then-Governor Kasich designed February 3rd as a Charles Follis Day. Our local connection makes this an extra special day in our community. One local connection makes this an extra special day. But the reality is that the entire state of Ohio should embrace this legacy of leadership and courage in the face of adversity. I want to congratulate the Charles Follis Foundation for using this occasion to promote the power of one, which I was mentioning. To paraphrase the late Representative John Lewis, "Nothing can stop the power of committed and determined people to make the difference in our society." So to everyone in the Worcester community, to everyone throughout the state of Ohio and to Buckeye fans, wherever you might be located, please join in celebrating Charles Follis Day, February 3rd. I just would like to add, and this is coming off the top of my head. I don't want to get emotional about it. But we're going through some sort of turbulent, some turbulent times, turbulent times. And I just want everyone to keep in mind who's in charge. And that's him, God. Please stay in prayer for this country, this world. And let's work together. Let's communicate together. Let's understand together about things. Bob says, you know, "Do you know I'm older than Bob?"
Not yet.
I started thinking, I'm like, "Hey, wait a minute. I'm supposed to be here, there, there." You know, as you get older. I know one thing, Father Time is undefeated. So I will end this saying, I appreciate this city. This is a great city. Chief back there does a great job with his department. Him and Scott Potole, who's my neighbor. They do a great job in keeping this community safe. And let's all stay behind it. Right now, we're on the move of growing again. When I grew up in this community in the late 50s, there was about 8,000 people here. And we're pushing 30. And I think it's growing in a real fine way. We just have to get housing more and that's being addressed. Is there something that you'd like to say, Cheryl?
There's one individual, Lydia Thompson.
Oh, thank you very much.
She's an honorary member of our community.
And I think all of you around here know Lydia Thompson. She's both, I look at her as the number one civil rights mover in this community. And she's a wonderful person. And there's probably other people I'm leaving out, but I hope not. And I appreciate your time and God bless you.
Thank you, Lawrence.
Thank you very much.
And to kind of wrap things up, thank you. But to give a little context for Lawrence's comments, there's a Charles Follis Foundation in Columbus. And they've got a website, you can Google that. And this Power of One was their initiative that they were kind of launching for Charles Follis Day. So that's what that Power of One concept is. And you can read about it more on the website. But they're, you know, looking for people to spend 24 hours being kind to one another, basically, and trying to, you know, having each individual act on that. So that's their, that Power of One theme. And again, this is similar to that previous TV experience I was telling you about. Herman Smith is one of the principals of that foundation. He's the one that reached out to us initially. And two weeks ago, we submitted a video clip at his request because he was going to be on, I think it's the NBC channel in Columbus 4 this afternoon. And they were doing a special on Charles Follis Day. And apparently that clip made it into there. Now, again, that's just Herman Smith telling me this. We have not seen it yet. If I get video evidence that, Lawrence, I'll share that with you and I'll share it with council. But I heard it went well, so we'll see. But again, thank you for coming out, Mr. President, council. Thank you for giving us more time than usual. But you did have last meeting off, so I feel like I felt I had a little more liberty there anyway than normal. So with that, I have nothing further.
All right. Thank you very much. All good information this evening. We have no petitions and we only have one individual that's signed up to discuss current legislation, which I'm assuming Mr. Drusil, you'll hold your comments till, for the public hearing related to the annexation or vacation. So, all right. With that, we'll move into our committee reports, which we really don't have any committee reports. But I do want to just say briefly that we did, as the mayor alluded, or actually, I guess, had directly said, we did have a presentation from the Worcester Community Hospital. And at this point, that was a really, we were so blessed to have what we have and the fact that we had people 75 years ago have the foresight to see the need for a healthcare, at that time, a hospital. Now we have a healthcare provider. And it's phenomenal, not only from a business standpoint, but from just generally what they provide. I mean, it's just an absolute, just a gem for our community. So with that, we do have a public hearing and I'll turn that over to Ms. Knappick.
Okay, thank you very much. We have scheduled tonight a public hearing on an alley vacation petition for partial 64-02-38.000. The map is all in your packet, so you can see where it is located. But Mr. Drusil, would you like to come up and enlighten us all?
Yes. Dr. Rachel, 225 North Market Street. Back in the 1960s, before maybe you were born and even Mayor Reynolds was a young lad, the Highway Department, is what it was then called, before it was called ODAC, had the foresight to put a bypass around the city of Worcester. Always be thankful for that. You drive through downtown Medina, rush hour, it's a nightmare. You don't have that. But one of the things they did was take some land to put in the bypass. And as a result of that, Henry Street, which if you look on your, on the tax map, it looks like it still goes through the whole way over basically to Christmas Run, the creek, not the street, Christmas Run Creek, was the dead end of Henry Street back in the day. And when the bypass went in, the cloverleaf that was put in, basically right along the Columbus Avenue there, took that portion of Henry Street out of play. And the farthest western portion of Henry Street was just left as the street, which it's not there anymore. There's nothing there, it's not accessible. And so we would like to have that vacated. The purpose of this is a sad purpose. And that is, this site is polluted. And EPA is all over it, trying to get it cleaned up. It was polluted by some tenants, which is not the property owner, but some tenants did some bad stuff back in the 70s, possibly thereabouts. But the EPA is on it. They're actually making some pretty good progress. But in order to finish, there's some things that they have to do, which requires basically control of the whole site. And they said to the property owner, "Well, you don't have the whole site because this street isn't vacated yet." And so that's the history of it. It's no consequence to anybody. It literally can't be used because the cloverleaf is in between the other end of Henry Street and where this would come across. So that's the history behind it. That's the reason when an alley, or in this case, a street is vacated, the law says that basically half of it goes to one side, half of it goes to the other side. Here, it's the same owner on both sides. And so it would just become owned by that property owner, who will then be able to work with the EPA and the other folks who are working on getting that site cleaned up. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them. The parcel that's shown there has been approved by the law director and I think by the city engineer. So it's all set and ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Drusil. Any comments from anyone on council? Any questions for Mr. Drusil?
Seems pretty clear, cut and dry.
I think that anytime anyone wants to take polluted property off our hands and clean it up themselves, the only thing we should say is thank you. So with that, I will close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business, so we will move right into new business. Resolution 2025-06. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-06. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract for the purchase of a Ford Ranger for use as an inspection vehicle and allowing for immediate enactment.
This is, will be introduced by Mr. Abernathy and it is budgeted. So, Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we're at the end of life of the current inspection vehicle. And it looks like we're having to vote on this because we have already purchased from the same vendor and it's going to go over the $75,000 threshold. So it's already budgeted, not much to it replacing another vehicle. So any questions or comments from the rest of council? All right, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 2025-06 is approved. Next item, Resolution 2025-07. This will be introduced by Mr. Malta, which is also a budgeted item. With that, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-07. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract for the purchase of replacement meter transmission units and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is meter replacement. We have been going through this. I'm guessing some of us have new meters and some of us do not. I don't think there's any other questions other than we're going to the automation. So it'll just be sent in, your water will be billed to you directly. If there are any questions, Mr. Pritz is here with us tonight to answer any specifics. Again, budgeted items, so I think we're pretty cut and clear. If there aren't any questions, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Malta. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution is approved. Next resolution, 2025-08, will also be by Mr. Malta. And is also budgeted. With that, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-08. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract for Lyman Bio-Solids residual management and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Budgeted item again, and this is to extend our Lyman Bio-Solids management. We have a contract. We will be getting the same pricing. So I will be motioning this to be adopted so that we can capture that pricing. If there aren't any questions from anybody, I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Malta. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the motion to adopt.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution is approved. Next item, Ordinance 2025-01. This will be introduced by Ms. Knappick. And it is a multi, three-reading item. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-01. An ordinance vacating an unnamed alley running in an east-west direction in the city of Worcester from the easternmost border of Wayne County, Parcel 64-01930.000 to the southeastern corner of Wayne County, Parcel 64-02038.000.
Ms. Knappick, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. This was very well explained to us by Mr. Drusil on behalf of his client. They are cleaning up this property, which is very important for us in the city of Worcester. And also for that property, I think that this is a piece of property the city's not using, has no use for, cannot be accessed otherwise from the property owner, who is the property owner on both sides. I can see absolutely no reason for us not to grant this request to vacate. So I am going to move first to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Husey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Resolution 2025-09, will be introduced by Mr. Husey. It is also a budgeted item. Ms. Hamilton, if you'd please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-09. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase an asphalt distributor truck and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Husey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is pretty straightforward. The city is requesting a purchase of a new asphalt distributor truck, which helps us maintain our streets, alleys, parking lots, et cetera, for the PPM crew. This is replacing a 1989 distributor truck. I'm surprised it's been on the road that long. But it's finally kicked the bucket and Mr. Denning's crew needs a, need a new one. Any questions? Mr. Denning's here.
Good job keeping it lasting that long.
I don't have any questions, but people are going to definitely be in favor of us of this getting this once the potholes start arising, when they do in the spring. It would be a wonderful asset to the city.
Are you buying a new one or are you buying a used one?
It'll be a regular one.
Let's hope you can get it to last as long as that one. Holy mackerel.
That's amazing. That's very impressive.
Well, it doesn't see salt, does it? Doesn't go out in the winter time. They last a long time when they don't see salt.
Yeah, but in a winter like this, when you've got the potholes that we'll probably have because of the cold, you'll probably see some action coming up.
Kurt, what's the lead time on this?
Yeah, that's a good question because they have one on hold, kind of earmarked for us. So we're hoping that if they pass this presidential night act tomorrow to cement that and get the appeal to Mondray and give them that here in that area.
Motion to adopt. Motion to adopt by Mr. Husey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call.
Laughing, coughing, crying.
Mr. Husey? Yes. And Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy? Yes. Mr. Myers? Yes, Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We had to muscle through that.
I was saying, I don't even have a cough drop.
Oh, no, she's got a whole bag here, unfortunately.
Poor thing.
All right, well, next item, Resolution 2025-10, is another budgeted purchase that will also be introduced by Mr. Husey. I want Ms. Hamilton to read it.
Resolution number 2025-10. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase a new crew truck that serves for immediate enactment.
Mr. Husey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Denning's crew also needs a new crew truck. This time, we're only replacing a 2023, not as old, but still as old, but just used daily for his PPM crew. Mr. Denning's here, if there's any additional questions.
2003.
That's what I thought.
That's what they're replacing.
2003, right? Not 2023.
Did I say 2023?
You did.
Am I replacing a 2003?
I apologize for that. It is a 2003 that they replaced.
You about got questions you weren't going to be able to answer.
Yes, Mr. Denning's here, if there's any questions. If not, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Husey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Last item this evening, another budgeted purchase, Resolution 2025-11. Will be introduced by Mr. Husey, but Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Why are you laughing so hard there, Mr. President?
I'm struggling.
I understand the pain in which she's going through.
Resolution number 2025-11. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase a dump truck and allowing for immediate enactment.
All right, Mr. Husey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, Mr. Denning only calls me when he needs something. Today, he was a little needy, but I kid. The city needs a new dump truck, you know, for our road maintenance, leaf collections, snow ice removal. This time, we are replacing a 2005 International, which has kind of exceeded its useful life, and this will just help update our fleet. Any questions? Mr. Denning's here.
So what, just curious, I know that we've kind of gone through a few different brands of not that it matters, it's more of just a point of curiosity from my end, so I'm assuming which, we're going to go with Peterbilt or Kenworth again, or?
We've got quotes for Kenworth and also International. It really comes down to availability, and so nine months, I think, for Kenworth and over a year for the International, so we go pretty pleased with Kenworth.
I'd say that makes that decision pretty easy, I think. All right, well.
No further questions, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Husey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
All right, very good. Well, we didn't do too bad. Twenty minutes, seven items. Of course, they're all, well, six of them were budgeted, so they're pretty straightforward, not much to discuss related to those. But in any event, we'll move on to miscellaneous, which at this point, we do have two people that have signed up to speak. The first, Mr. Barnett, do you want to?
President Sanders, I'd like to move to waive the time limit this evening.
Okay, to waive it completely, or to waive it to a certain time limit?
Five minutes.
Let's start where we left off, distracted drivers last evening.
Well, hold on.
One second.
We've got.
We're going to extend our time limit this evening.
We've got a discussion at this point. We have a motion, is there a second, to Mr. Myers' motion related to extending the time from two to five minutes?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Knappick. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Anyhow, let's leave off and start where we left off on distracted drivers. So one day I come home, wife said, "You ain't gonna believe what happened." I said, "What happened?" She said, "Some girl come to the front door with her mailbox." I said, "With her mailbox?" And she said, "Yeah." She was pulling off Old Man Turn on Burbank, going slow around the curve, and hit her mailbox. She admitted she was on the phone. Okay, this is what happens all the time. You cannot tell me yield to pedestrians going to be safe. I don't care what. You know, I didn't have a degree in engineering. I got common sense. Now, right before winter break, I was making my coffee and looked down, and the traffic's backed up all the way to Burbank for the drop-off students. So if they have a roundabout, tell me if I'm wrong. Nobody can. The traffic heading north on Burbank's going to the high school, that traffic has a right-of-way. Now, the traffic's going to be backed up through the roundabout. Mr. Jones in the heart of Worcester's having a heart attack. The EMS can't get to him. Mrs. Smith's house is on fire because she has a grease fire, and the fire engines can't get to them. And worse, a police officer needs assistance, and don't tell me the police don't come from there. I've seen it. I'm not coming in here making this stuff up. I see it daily. I see the police going by my house, two or three of them at 50 miles per hour, and you're going to put a roadblock in their way? How can you do that? What is the most important thing for a police, an ambulance, and fire? What is it? Response time. Am I not right? And you want to put a donut or peanut in front of their way? Oh, my. And the safety, I'm just not making this up because I don't want this roundabout. I truly, in my heart, believe this is not a good idea, and somebody is going to call and say, "Bob, we screwed up," when it happens. And I'll be down here every meeting, or my two minutes miscellaneous, and say, "I told you so, I told you so." I'm not, I'm not, I lived there, Bob. I see it. I see this. I don't know what else to say. But I'll tell you what, when you take away them lights, the intersection at Burbank and Highland is going to become a hazard. The intersection at Friendsville and 83, where the fire station is, I see people getting in that left-hand lane, return before they're supposed to. Now, they're going to be backed up in front of the fire station. The fire engine isn't going to be out, the EMS squad isn't going to be able to get out. There's too many safety issues. It isn't going to solve your problems. In fact, it's only two times a day. It's at the beginning of the high school and the end of the high school. And I'm going to tell you what, there will be no more lanes to turn on, and people are going to go, people are going to love you going down Cannon, or that Cannon Drive, isn't it? They're going to love it because all the traffic's going to go down there. They're going to be at the meeting next time. So I think I've said all I can, but I just want you to think about this. Would you want this in front of your house? Do you want to put our students in danger? Do you want to put the pedestrians in danger? That's all I've got to say, folks. Thank you. Thank you for the excellent time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item, or next person that signed up is Tate Emerson.
Mr. Sanders, are we extended to four minutes, or just extended, I don't know, from five minutes?
Yeah.
Probably five minutes, too?
Sure.
Tate Emerson, 69 North Buckeye Street. I'm here to encourage the council and administration to consider having AEP install different new streetlights than what are currently going in right now. I see that the new streetlights are full cutoff, which is great, LED, so that's great, but the color temperature of those lights is a very white and blue light. It's kind of like a harsh white industrial light, as opposed to a soft warm amber light that we have right now. And I think those types of light create additional glare, as opposed to amber lighting, and additional light pollution. And I think with the size of this project, the longevity of these lights, that it's going to hurt the beautification of Worcester and the neighborhoods by having this harsh white light that's usually used for industrial purposes, as opposed to the soft amber light that we have right now around the city and around the neighborhoods. Think of just being outside, walking around the lights, and think about the actual, when it's really snowy out, the light shining into your home now, as opposed to being the amber light from the street now, it's going to be much more harsh white light. And there's an organization called Dark Sky International. I have, can I hand these out?
Sure.
Okay. They do some white paper on lighting, the street lighting, and they encourage everyone to use lights that are 3,000 K or less. As for what you guys have, our bidding up now is probably 4,000 or more, but so there's some information here about just what their thoughts are, and the work they've done on color temperatures for lights, and why the high white and blue lights are not good for humans, for wildlife. They talk about, so this white paper here that's highlighted, I took some excerpts from that on the second page, where they talk about the problem with glare associated with the white light. And then they also talk about how the white light makes it, for folks that have aging eyes, makes it harder for them to see. Specifically, I would point to right up here at Wayne Avenue and Burbank. There's one of these new lights that's just gone up right behind the street light that's right there. And of course, all these years, I've never noticed the street light until it became one of these new white lights, and it shines very brightly into your eyes as you're looking up at this particular light. So there's some safety concern, particularly there. But I'd like you to consider the problems with the white light, with the glare, the aging eyes, and the health effects for humans and wildlife, and consider finding a LED full cutoffs light that is more of an amber color than the white light that's out there now. Because it's about investing a bunch of money, there are many lights out there, this is going to take a long time, and if we can do it right now, it'll benefit us in the future.
Makes sense.
Yeah. There's, oh, the Village of Kilbuck is actually working on a, they have a large grant that they're doing for their community reinvestment, and they're working on putting some dark sky approved lighting down there right now. Actually, they're working with OE Gem, which we're all filled with vinegar with, they're helping with that project. They're not very far along with it, but it's in their plans for it, so. Any questions?
Thank you, that's very interesting.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much.
I'll research that. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the council portion of miscellaneous, and we'll start with Mr. Husey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, just thank you to the hospital staff for hosting us today, very informative, always good to see the local hospital doing well, and thanks to Lawrence Walker and his team for sharing information on Charles Follis, and happy Charles Follis Day, happy Black History Month, and regardless of what anybody tells us, diversity is a strength of ours in this community and across the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abernathy?
Yes, I want to just take a little bit of my time to just kind of talk about just a general issue that's been coming up across the state, and that is the increasing of property value and property taxes. It's something we can't really address as a city council, but it is something that continues to come up, and I just want to bring it up in a public forum to just state that, you know, I really support that at some point, a legislative body within the state, or maybe at the county level, we need to address this at some point, and it needs to be looked at and reassessed. I'm hearing more and more stories of senior citizens and retirees who may have paid off their homes, or getting close to paying off their homes, who are getting taxed out of their own homes. And this is becoming a much bigger issue, and I want to be able to try and use the limited platform that I have to bring awareness to this. And at some point, there has to be a different way. And I'm not saying that there isn't value in that we just eliminate property tax, but there's only so much that we can continue to just keep raising property taxes, and this is very fresh in people's minds, because people probably just received their property tax bills, and you probably noticed they went up again.
Significantly.
So I would really just implore anybody that may be reviewing this, watching this, or hearing about this, that there is some movement in some different counties and communities, and maybe it's time for Wayne County to be part of that. We really need to take a stand at some point and just make the effort to reassess. Do we continue down this path of just constantly raising the real estate taxes? And are we going to continue to go down a path where we're going to push the elderly population out of their homes through taxes? And I certainly don't want that, and I don't think anybody in this room wants that. And I certainly don't want that, and I don't think anybody in this room wants that. You know, and I hope that we're not seeing a lot of that, but this is something we're hearing more and more and more about throughout the state. And I'm talking to other peers of mine and through my own day job, and it's becoming more prevalent. So, again, I know as a city council, that's not our purview, but I sure would like to use this platform to just raise awareness to it. And hopefully, maybe it gets somebody's attention that maybe this is something that needs some reform and just needs looked at. So, I yield my time. Thank you. I appreciate the moment to be able to share that.
Thank you. Ms. Knappich.
And as a semi-retiree, I appreciate that very much because I wanna stay in my home. So, thank you for raising that issue. I would like to thank the folks who came here to recognize Charles Follis. It is such an amazing thing we have in this community to go out and be able to say the first black professional football player came from Worcester, Ohio. That is just huge. And, and something we should be very, very proud of. I wanna thank Tim Monet for all his time and effort he put in to the city here, and wish him best of luck on his retirement. He will be sorely missed. I wanna thank the street crews because I did not get any calls about my streets not cleaned in time. What I did hear was the same as Mr. Denning. People will really thank you for getting out and doing as much as you did, and that's an uneasy job. I mean, those people are out there twenty-four-seven. When we got that snow and it got so cold and it gets so icy, they put their lives in danger because people aren't looking for them and then, you know, there's potential accidents. So, we, I just want you to know how much we appreciate the things that they do. It is amazing. Let's see what else I wanna say. I think that sums it up for me, and again, the hospital, too, thank you for their presentation. Another amazing gem that we have in the city of Worcester that people just don't know. If you've been to a hospital, anyplace else, and had to stay for an amount of time, oh, you just wanna run back home to Worcester and be here. They provide great service at a debt-free, tax-free ability to do so. And they're adding more and more benefit to our community so people in our community don't have to go to Akron, Cleveland, Canton, or anywhere else to get top-notch, world-class healthcare. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gaffey.
Yeah, so I would just like to echo the comments made by Mrs. Knappich and Mr. Jose regarding, you know, the presentation that we had tonight. I think that was fantastic that they were able to come and share with us some more information on Charles Follis. That's some information I didn't fully know, and so I definitely appreciated that. Mr. Barnett, Mr. Emerson, thank you for coming and sharing tonight. Really appreciate it when people come and, you know, share their thoughts and their passions and things with city council. There's things that we don't always recognize or know, and it really helps when citizens come and bring them to our attention, so thank you both for that. And then Chief Fisher, thanks for sharing the success of those cameras. Definitely appreciate that. It's nice to be able to see a direct connection to some of the things that we do here, and so really appreciate you coming and sharing that tonight. That's about it for me.
All right, thank you. Ms. Warden.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Denning. I'm curious, I've talked to some folks at the county, and I know that their salt supply was running quite low, and there's also been some changes, and through my day job, they're not bagging salt any longer currently because it's needed on the roadways. How are we doing?
We're doing quite well, actually.
Good.
So, we, we had a thousand tons to deliver two Saturdays ago.
Great.
And then we have six hundred more tons to come, so that'll, that'll take care of basically this year's budget for salt, but we're in a good, we're in a good position right now. We have about three thousand tons.
Great, thank you. I hope we don't need it all. The other thing, it's also weather-related I wanted to bring up. I mentioned a little bit earlier at the hospital meeting, just briefly to a couple people, but I'm at the, after a conversation with Mr. Scavelli, I'm tossing around the idea, I'd like to hear from the rest of council at some point, whether, I mean, it's a phone call or we can, you know, have a discussion at some point, but I see no reason to have a snow shoveling ordinance on the books if we're not going to enforce it. I've heard from several people complaining about their neighbors not shoveling their sidewalks. In my neighborhood, everybody seems to kind of have each other's backs, and we all go out and take care of it when we can, but I also know that that doesn't happen everywhere, and some people have various reasons. They're working, they're elderly, they're disabled. When you're a business owner, I feel like you probably want your customers and your neighbors to be safe in front of your business, so common sense would tell you that you should go out and shovel and salt and make it a safe area. But I know that there are a lot of businesses who don't, and we have no way of enforcing that because we've chosen not to thus far. So I would like to ask council to consider maybe removing this from our ordinances going forward. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Malta.
Thank you. Thanks for all those that attend and that are viewing tonight. It is important, and I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Myers.
Thank you. Congratulations again, I believe I mentioned it once before, but to Scott Rotolo. I think, I think he does a great job for the city as well as as many, many activities that he is involved in. Really, also congratulations, the Lyric Theater that's gonna be opening up soon, has just been a labor of love by a lot of people. I'm not gonna start naming names because I'd forget some people, but there's just been a lot of our local community involved in putting that, that project together, and it's gonna be real exciting to have that opening. I wanna welcome Joe Bodar. Is it, I think I've got that correct, Mr., but welcome him to the city's. Bodar?
B-O-D-N-A-R.
Oh, Bodnar?
Bodnar.
Bodnar. Bodnar. Well, we'll welcome him to the team, and we'll have his name learned before Tim leaves, so. I want to thank all of my fellow city council members and the folks that came and spoke this evening. I appreciate both of your comments. Congratulations on spending one point four million dollars tonight of budgeted money, so that's all I have. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you. I know, that's. I know, that's. And there's not a damn, there's nothing you can do.